And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time for public comments. I don't have any cards. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the Camrio Sanitary District Board on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent calendar.
Second. So motion is second to approve the consent calendar. Please vote.
Five.
Motion carries unanimously. There are no departmental items, no other items, other than comments. Do any board members have comments? Seeing none, we will recess to 7:30 for a public hearing.
I'd now call the Camrio Successor Agency to order. Do we have any changes on the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present. We had no changes. Public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Camrio Successor Agency this evening? I have none up here. I see none. We'll close the public comments time. Minutes. Calendar.
Consent calendar?
Yes, consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
We have motion second. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. We have no departmental items, so any comments from staff? Seeing none, we will... Any comments from board members? Seeing none, we will adjourn. Now I'd like to call the Camrio City Council to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Any changes in the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring to your attention a posted special meeting for this evening that includes a study session and a departmental item.
Okay, so we'll be recessing to that later. We have a presentation this evening. Steve Mitchell, we have a retiree, and I see all his fans out there. Steve, will you come forward?
I'm ready to go.
Well, Steve's been here... Steve's been here as long as I have. Long time. And he's done some things that some of you might not know. You know those beautiful proclamations we have running around town and giving out everywhere? We get compliments for. This man's the one that designed those. So we have some of the best proclamations in the county, if not the best. But Steve's been... Worked hard, especially in the redevelopment area. He was stationed out there. He was way away from City Hall at that time. But that's where they were for a long time, and now he's been inside. I think he's decided, said, "Ah, work too much, I'm leaving." But he's home, and he's here. And we congratulate him on all the time he's had in our city and how much we've benefited. Council members, any comments?
Yes, I would like to thank Steve for his service to the city. I've been here 30 years. You've been here 29 years, so you've been here just about as long as I've been here. And you rose to the top, and you've done a wonderful job for us. Working our way down the line. I too want to echo those thanks on behalf of the City of Camrio. And we're going to miss your artistic ability, so I hope you're on call in those times when we just can't... Because you are truly a talented man, and we certainly have appreciated having you with the city. Thank you. We wish you the best in retirement, though.
Well, I've known Steve as both a city councilman and as a city manager. And I recall when he did develop the proclamation during that time of I was city manager. And later on, when I was a civilian again and were helping out with the ranch, we got... I got Steve to design a similar type of proclamation for the ranch, which they use, too. So he's got his talent spread all over the country now. But Steve, you've done a great job for the city, and you're going to be sorely missed. Talent like yours doesn't come along very often, so...
Evan?
Yeah, I want to not only thank Steve, of course, but his family for sharing him with us all these years. And I know there's been some late times, I'm sure, and some deadlines that he has to meet, and you always did. I love the Fair Poster and all the other... I don't have any talent in that, so somebody that does is like amazing to me, how you can visualize something and, you know, make it work. But you are a great employee, Steve, and we wish you nothing but success in your retirement. I know you're going to hopefully go out and have some fun and do some different things and hopefully, you know, continue doing what you do best. And we wish you nothing but success. And it's tough for us, but I'm happy for you. And, you know, that's kind of what we work for, right? We work all these years to try to enjoy ourselves, too. So have some fun.
I don't normally do this, but we have staff here. Staff's worked with him for a long time. Is there anything staff members would like to say?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
You know, yeah, that's a good idea.
There you go.
Thank you. One thing that I wanted to add was that not only does he have the artistic side, but he's also been able to use his other side of his brain to work on studies, to work on reports, to work on planning things. So he's been able to marry both the design qualities and the technical expertise as a planner and so forth. As an example of that are the Dawson Drive Design Guidelines. So he worked on that project and was able to come up with a design concept and the planning expertise for that. So it's been great working with him when I was working here and seeing him come on as an engineer type from Vetco and then be able to be immersed in planning and absorb all of that while being able to be used for his artistic skills as well.
Any other comments? Joe?
Thank you. So I've had the opportunity to work with Steve for two years, and it's been a wonderful experience. And not only is he a talented planner, but he's a very kind man. And his kindness and love and generosity is expressed in his work, and I think we all have benefited from his demeanor and professionalism. So I wish you the best, Steve.
Before we go any further, see, those that don't know, if you look at the screen, you see all the Bogan Vias, Camrio Bogan Vias, by the way. Across the top, that is the outline of our... What he put together for our recognition and our proclamations. And so it's a beautiful piece of work. Before we're going to... I mean, as we get to the end here, I'd like to have Steve tell us what he intends to do when he retires.
Well, I'm not much forgiving. Speeches, speeches. I am going to be doing some consulting work in Ojai. I've never been able to spend any time there since... Really, since when I... We started working here 30... Almost 30 years ago, we started building a house at the same time. So I've been spending my weekends working on that. And so it'll be nice just to spend some time there, do some consulting work for the city. My daughter in the audience, she's also in the Fair Poster. She is kind of a partner in a theater company, so I do sets for her. So I'll be doing some set design and doing some traveling with my wife.
30 years, that's what it takes in Ojai to build a house, anyway.
And they say we have bad policies.
And he's part of the staff. Well, tonight, again, on behalf of the City of Camrio, I'd like to present this plaque to you and thank you for all the years you've put in. You've got a picture being taken somewhere here, so you better show it.
Oh, I think there's quite a few. Again, thank you. We give these up. People may get through the end.
Now, we did the minutes, didn't we? We did the consent calendar.
No.
Oh, that was the other thing. I'd like to now move to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Motion is second. Any other comments or... Please vote.
Well, they don't want to see what else we're going to do tonight.
That motion passes five to zero. We have no city council items or staff items at this time. I do have community development... Sorry. The community development area. Would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Morgan. So Mr. Burrow will be given a very brief update on a request for an extension of our exclusive negotiating agreement with Mr. Mian and Associates.
Can't wait.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the City Council. Your staff is recommending that we do an additional extension on the exclusive negotiation with the Mian Companies. We've been working with them for the development of the Hotel Conference Center on the property. They're the 12 acres at Ventura Boulevard and Las Posas Road. And there's been things that have been accomplished and things that are continuing to be. It is quite an involved process. You take one step forward, two steps forward, one step back. But what has been worked on is that your city attorney's office has prepared a term sheet, and that's been sent to the Mian Companies for their review and for... To execute that. That will be the next item that will come before you. And what that will lay out are the items that will agree to agree to. And with regard to some of the things that will be the specifics that will then work their way into the agreement for the sale and development of real property. It's a little different than, say, Cedar Oak, wherein that we still do need to do the environmental documentation, which also would include the agreement. That would be a discretionary item, so that has to be studied through the SEQA process. With your action earlier on the consent calendar, we will be working with Cadence Environmental, moving from just the initial study on to the technical document, the most likely a mitigated negative declaration and/or a focused DIR. So those are continuing on. Your Public Works Department is continuing to work on... With the Flood Control District in moving the main public works project on the property forward. A cooperative agreement has been returned to them, and that will be what's necessary in order to spell out and obtain the permit for that. All of the other aspects continue to be reviewed on the property relative to things that will need to be worked into revised plans. We have spoken with the Mian Group on several occasions, and we are in hopes that they will proceed next with a revised preliminary plan so that they can do a pre-app review. And then, on the heels of that, go ahead and submit for their commercial plan development permit in CUP so that that is part of the project description for the initial study. And then that, along with the agreement, would come before the decision makers, the Planning Commission and the City Council, as one overall package. So it's progressing. Obviously, we all would like to have had this done last week, but we do anticipate that quite possibly the term sheet would be coming forward to the City Council, possibly in January, although I can't say for certain. But that's what we do expect. So with that, the recommended action is to authorize the Second Amendment to the Exclusion Agreement to extend the ENA for an additional 120 days to allow for the continued work effort between the City of Camrio and the Mian Companies.
Question, Bill? Kevin?
Bob, is 120 days going to be enough? I know in December, obviously, you know, probably not going to get much done, but are you comfortable 120 is going to be enough?
I believe that that will allow us to get the term sheet before you. And then, once we're under the term sheet, then we've advanced it to the next step. So that would then take care of what's been being done under the ENA.
So you feel good about it's moving forward as fast as it can go and all that stuff, right?
In terms of this... I was kind of thinking that it's kind of like a large vault where you turn the combination, and then something clicks in, and you turn it back, and something else clicks in. Well, there's a lot of clicks that have to be done. And it is progressing.
That's what I'm trying to say.
And the Mian Companies are very much still interested in this project, yes.
It is progressing, and things are... It just takes time, but you feel it's making its positive progress.
Yes, and Brian Parrick's been doing a lot of that because it does involve the legal aspects of it and the negotiations. And if he has anything to share, I'd be happy to hear from him as well.
Other questions? I know, but we had questions, and now they're in product talk.
No, I think Bob has covered it very well. We have been working closely with Sean Nichols, who's a vice president for Mian Company. Last month, we had a meeting. Mr. Mian was here. And they do have the draft term sheet, and we hope that it's in pretty close to final form by now. And I intend to follow up with Mr. Nichols in the next couple of days and try to get that hammered out and get this back to you so we can have that done. And then, as Bob said, the environmental will go forward, and then this will all come back to you as a package after it goes through the Planning Commission with the environmental document and the agreements.
Other questions? Thanks, Bob, for your comments. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the second extension of the Exclusion Negotiating Agreement Number 2015-48 with TM Mian and Associates for an additional 120 days.
Second.
We have motion second. Other comments? Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Now we're going to move... There's no... Our city attorney, you have any items?
I don't believe I have any items. We have closed sessions, but no specific items during your 5:00 session.
City manager? City clerk?
You do have the administrative services item.
That's next.
Oh, I'm...
Yeah, I'm getting there. City clerk, do you have anything to say? Now we'll move to administrative services. Who's handling that?
I will, Your Honor. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the City Council. The item being brought forward tonight, which you'll find in your red folders, is an item to consider a professional services agreement with S.L. Leonard and Associates, Inc. for construction management services specific to the building improvements that will create a young adults area within the Camrio Public Library. S.L. Leonard and Associates, Inc., or SLL, was involved in the original design, project management, and construction of the existing library facility. Based on SSL's experience, past involvement, and good working relationship with our architect, SSL provides unique qualifications for construction management services for this project. As construction manager, SLL will oversee pre-construction, bidding, construction, including day-to-day management, and post-construction phases of the project. SLL will also be responsible for communication, coordination, quality control, cost efficiency, documentation, and the project timeline while working closely with city staff and the project architect. With the approval of the suggested action tonight, we would expect to award a contract on the construction in early spring and have a completed project in midsummer. Sufficient funds for construction management services are available in the fiscal year 1617 Capital Improvement Project Fund, and staff is recommending a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with S.L. Leonard and Associates, Inc. at the not-to-exceed amount of $65,000. We do have Sean Leonard in the audience with us tonight. I'm also available to answer any questions, and this concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions?
Do we have a...
Kevin?
Do we have a cost on this yet?
$65,000.
$65,000, an amount not to exceed.
That's an amount not to exceed.
Sean, you haven't been up here in a long time. Would you like to say something, anything?
I do have a question.
Yes.
When we were originally talking about the cost of this, was this included in that initial cost?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's nothing new. It's just a formulation.
Your Honor, I'll move to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with S.L. Leonard and Associates, Incorporated, at a not-to-exceed amount of $65,000.
We have motion second. Any other comments? Please vote. That vote passes five to zero. Nice to see you again, Sean. Okay, now we are... We come down to the last thing, and that would be city comments. I think we have time for city council comments, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, 10 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Charlotte, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. I attended quite a few meetings. I attended the Economic Outlook luncheon, which was interesting. I attended the Reagan Library's 25th anniversary. I attended and took the certificate of recognition to Sam Oliveto on his retirement as the executive director for Contract Cities Association after 30 years. I attended yesterday... Well, Monday, I attended the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency's Executive Committee Meeting, where we talked about the water markets, and the Las Posas user group made a report. And yesterday afternoon, I attended a Camrio Ranch Foundation Committee on Committees, which actually is going a lot better than I thought it would. We're going to be making our final report in January or February. When we started those meetings... Two meetings ago, I thought it was going to take a year. And I also wanted to comment, I thought that shortly after election, the editorial in The Star, I think it was Sunday, on how sore cities must allow some growth, and people... Some people seem to have an idea that the sore and the growth control mean no growth. And it was a very good editorial. And if you didn't read it, I'll have the city clerk copy it and pass it out, because I think it was good. Anyway, that's all I have.
Jan?
All righty. We did have a V-COG meeting this last week, and our major topic had to do with the passage of the marijuana initiative. And the title of the presentation was Holy Smokes, It Passed, so... Tells you a lot. I thought that was kind of cute. Anyway, it was a very good presentation. The police chief for the City of Ventura, who is also the chair of the state's Police Chief Association, I guess whatever they call theirs, who had done a lot of work on it, gave us a presentation that was very informative. He'd done a lot of work or studied and gone to Colorado, Washington, Oregon, places where they had already passed it in different forms. So it was very, very informative, and I know we're going to talk about this later. And then we also had an attorney present who gave us some of the legal aspects. So I think all the cities went away with a beginning on what should happen, so it was a very, very good meeting. Just a couple... Just one other thing I just want to mention. We did have a business visit yesterday out at the county school's Career Education Center. And I know it's been out there for a long time, but I was just amazed at how it has changed and grown. And I asked her, "How long has it been since you really, you know, got to this level?" And she says, "It's really only been about three years where they really took that leap." So if you ever have the opportunity to go out there and see, they have a dental assistance program, they have a medical assistance program. Of course, they have... I know the one you went to recently was the kids who want to learn how to fly.
Simulator program.
Yeah.
Great stuff.
But it really is teaching them the fundamentals of how to fly and really actually working, you know, to the ground school piece of it, and then integrating what they're learning in school. So it... They had auto mechanics, body shop, welding. I mean, they really had a lot of hands-on, you know, kind of those basic fundamentals that we've forgotten about in our public schools. And it's the trade schools, yeah. But even beyond that, I mean, it's just... It was just amazing. I was quite impressed. But it is free to all the high school students in the county, and they actually provide transportation, which I was really amazed, all the high schools. So I take that opportunity to go out and visit them, and I urge anyone who's interested in... They've got all your high school credits done that you need to, and you have those electives. It certainly is a wonderful opportunity. I was quite impressed.
Repeat that again, because sometimes people don't understand that when you're finished, you can go out and do those fun programs, too.
Right, you get all your necessary credits in in order to graduate and go on to college. But these are the things that, if you're going that direction, or if there's a trade you want to work in, it's a great introduction. Most of their classes are in the afternoon, so they go to high... You know, the regular courses in the morning and head out there in the afternoon. So I know Joe was with us, and who else was with us?
I would have been there, but I've been to all of them, so...
Yeah, so it was... It was good. It was... Oh, and yes, we introduced our new finance director to the... To some of the fun things you get to do around here, go visit different things, so we welcome you on that. Anyway, I want to thank whoever set that one up. That was a fun one, and I really do welcome in. We all go and see it and promote it, because it's a great thing.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes, I attended three meetings. We had a VRSD meeting on November 3rd, an investment committee meeting November 14th, and this morning, we had a Streets and Transportation Committee meeting. I just want to also... I had a lady, Mary, came in the store, and I want to make sure that I passed on to staff in the council that the good job they did on the overlay and slurry seal. Again, I figure you can't get enough, you know, accolades on that, but she wanted me to pass on that. And especially the traffic mitigation measures that were taken, that she was very impressed with that, so I want to pass that on, too. And I think that's it.
Bill?
Other than attending the Ronald Reagan Library 25th Anniversary with Charlotte, I did have to worry about her. I worked too much, but...
You've been kind of busy.
Medical issues in the family.
Yes.
But I have myself gotten some... Thank you for the traffic programs and the paving programs.
You were the excellent.
How the city did it in such an effortless manner in traffic mitigation, so it'd be a progression.
Okay. Well, I went to a lot again. The Economic Outlook Committee, we... Several of us went to the Las Posas Country Club. And necessarily saying I agree with everything he said, because later on, I talked to him about something, and he said, "Well, he didn't figure that in because of this, this..." I can't wait to hear the next one, not him. I'm sorry, but I just disagree with some of the things he was saying. Exactly.
I attended that, too, and I agree with you.
We... I think we went up there and talked to him later about, "Well, what about that?" You know? He's from Santa Barbara, and there's a lot of different things going on that don't go on here. And so, anyway, we went to that, saw that, experienced that. Ribbon cutting at the Village... At the Commons. You know where the little street is, has all the commercial out there in Village... At the Village Park? Well, there's one open across the street from the market, that little market, Sam's. And it was... I never imagined those were three stories. But you go in, you have the office down below, and then you have upstairs, you've got the kitchen, the living room, and a nice patio. It's covered, of course, and you see out over it. And then you go upstairs, and there's two bedrooms. You go upstairs, there's two more bedrooms, and there's bathrooms. That's amazing space, 1,800 feet for living space there. And so I was very... I thought that was a great... And price was not bad for those. I think there's one for sale left. That's it. Anyway, it was a good experience for new people coming in from RE/MAX. CSUCI ribbon cutting. Our city manager and I went out there, and we had a good time. They opened up the new 600-person... Well, they didn't open it, they're already there, but they did ribbon cutting for the 600 student housing they've got, they just opened. And they're full already. We went through all the speeches and listened to that. Then we went over to the... Something that I'm going to have to go out... And when you go out there, go eat, because it's open to the public. And nunchtimes are like eight bucks. There's food from all kinds of food you can eat. Islands Cafe. And it's really a neat place to go and visit and eat and so on and so forth. So Islands Cafe was very impressive. VC... Okay, I went to the Ventura... Not Ventura County. The Central Coast Air Basin Meeting in Santa Barbara. I'm the chairman there of that. And that was a good meeting. We learned about marijuana. That's why I came and sat in your meeting, because I want to see what the comparisons was. But the air quality has... They do play a role. Right now, they're doing medical marijuana in that field in Carpinteria. You know, when you pass by Carpinteria and you see all those tons of nurseries? That's marijuana. Medical marijuana. The problem they're having is this. It's right up next to the fence, the school's right there, high school. When they have budding season, they have to go air out the rooms. It's so bad. Well, now this new one that we got... I listened to it along with Jan, they are going to have a 600-foot space between schools and homes and the marijuana-growing places. So that's going to affect that a little bit, but also help the community a little bit. Anyway, it's going to be a whole lot more, not conditions, but regulations and things yet to go. That's where we... We'll learn about that tonight. Then I went to the Air Quality Control Board meeting. It's just a normal business meeting. Association Water Agencies meeting. We have a few new bodies there. And again, that's where you want to learn about water, that's where you learn about water. that's where you learn about water, because that's the heads of all the water agencies in the county. Ribbon cutting at Origami Owl, if you know, anybody know about Origami Art Ladies, you know, put the little, I didn't, but I went in, and it's kind of fun to watch that and how they do it. And it's held at the Chamber of Commerce, because she operates out of her home. Airport Authority meeting, normal, oh, it wasn't a normal meeting, I'm sorry. We sat there for a long time, listening to everyone about the inspections of the hangars and saying you can't, per your agreement from years ago, when they said they want to put private hangars in, and the county wasn't ready to put in hangars yet, we allowed them in the eighties. And one of the conditions was, when you don't have a plane of your own in your hangar, then you're going to have to leave. And so there's a few people who've gotten older, and they don't, and want to sublet it out to other people. Well, you're subletting public property out and making money on it, and so that can't happen. And so we went through a long series of talks in both directions in that one. So it was a, I forgot, that was a busy evening. Eagle Scout Award at the Methodist Church. We had an investment committee meeting, Kevin and I did this morning, not this morning, last week. Again, that's always a fun thing to see where we are, and we're in great shape, but it was a quick meeting, because, again, there was no big changes. We had a business visit, excuse me, we'll forget that. We had Streets and Transportation Committee meeting this morning, and we learned about some new, new crossing, new, what do you call it?
Crosswalks.
Yeah, crosswalks, crosswalks and things like that, where they'd like to put them in town, and also some speed limit changes. And one of those is, I'll just name one, is Long Earl Joseph Drive. It's forty right now, and it's forty-five they're, they're asking for, so that's what it's going to be, forty-five.
It'll come to us.
Pardon?
It'll come to us.
Yes, but that's all going to come to you later. Educator of the Month with St. Mary's today. St. Mary Magdalene was a, that, I've never seen a crowd of young kids cheer one teacher. That lady, they all knew her and knew her well, and it was just loud cheers and so on. So she's a very valuable teacher to that school. The only other thing I did is I did go to the VCOG, only because I wanted to hear about the marijuana thing. I sat in back, of course, and I listened. But interesting, and a lot of change, a lot of things that we're going to learn tonight that we'll have to make our decisions to. So done with this, now we'll recess until 7:30. Let the record reflect, oh, let's take a roll for once, we haven't done that in a long time.
Councilmember Kildee. Councilmember Little.
Here.
Councilmember Craven.
Here.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Here. Please stand for flag salute. Mr. Kildee, could you lead us into the back seat? Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd also like to, Charlotte, you need to bring the sanitary district to order.
Well, public comments.
All right, public comments, I don't have any cards up here for public comments that aren't on agenda items.
First, you have a presentation.
Oh, presentation.
No, you have a presentation.
Oh, that's true. Sorry. Okay, I do have a presentation.
Public comments.
I'd like to call Ms. Mara up to the side podium. This will be a proclamation for the domestic violence awareness. We have an event coming up pretty soon. I'd like you to talk to the audience about the event that's coming up. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody, thank you. I had some notes that I left down there, but that's, actually, would you mind? Yes, thank you. Let me just start by sharing a brief statistic. One in three girls in the United States has been affected by abuse in a dating relationship. Did you hear that? One in three. One in three. That statistic includes elementary-aged girls, it includes high schoolers.
Could you speak into the mic?
Yeah, a little bit more. Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. It includes grown women, and our community just lost two fine women to domestic violence homicide related to abuse. And if you haven't heard about that, what you have missed is an incredible response from the people in our community, who have raised tens of thousands of dollars for the families that were affected by that, but who have also come together in a way that I believe is unprecedented. And this event that we're proposing, and that Mayor Morgan has been so kind as to agree to welcome, is an event that is designed to focus on prevention specifically. So when we talk about domestic violence, what we're talking about is specific sets of acts with specific signs and specific ways to respond, and most members of our community are not aware of what those things are. Most people aren't aware that we actually have a domestic violence hotline that's local, that you can call 2-1-1, and that you can make a report about what you've seen, but most, most women, most men have not heard about that. So this event is being put together by myself, I'm a professor of family communication at Pepperdine, and I specifically focus in my research on intervention in working toward healthier families and how that affects our emotional, our physical well-being. So when we put this event together, we started to partner with Interface, with the Coalition for Family Harmony, with the Oxnard Police Department, and Sergeant Sharon Giles, who is a regional, possibly national expert on the topic. We are working with, did I say the District Attorney's Office? We're working with, share, excuse me, Mission Oaks Wellness and Counseling, and they are coming together each to talk about the various components of domestic violence, so that we don't have headlines, and we don't have to have things, again, where women are organizing bake sales to provide money to have a good Christmas for children who lost their mothers. We don't want to see that in our town, and so the event is called Not in My Town, and it is this Saturday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM. It's at Vineyard Community Church, and we will have the panelists speak to the central issues, and then we will have an open question and answer time. I would invite all of you to attend, and more importantly, to talk to your neighbors about this, to encourage them to come as well. This is not just something that affects a certain subset of people, it's everybody. It is one in three, and that includes me. And I'm standing up here, and during the years of 2005 to 2007, I was part of a relationship that was violent in nature. And if you think that someone with a PhD can't experience that, I'm evidence that that's not true. So I would encourage you to rethink that and to come to an event like this and participate in that nature of our community. Thank you.
I think one of the most dangerous calls that a policeman can get, and I think our commander will tell you that, is a domestic violence case, because you don't know what can occur, what emotions are going on, and so on. So there are many officers who get injured at those kinds of cases. That's why we, this getting awareness of domestic violence is so important. On behalf of the City of Camrio and the people of Camrio, I'd like to give you this proclamation, what does that say there? Declaring this Domestic Violence Month, so thank you very much for your service and what you've done.
Your Honor, could she, give her the microphone again, so she can repeat where it is, when it is, and if you have the address with you, give the address, because a lot of people don't know where that church is.
Okay. The event is this Saturday, November 19th, at seven o'clock in the evening. It will go until about nine o'clock, and it is at Vineyard Community Church. I do not have the address right here, but it's off of Flynn Road and I believe Lewis. It's close by. Flynn and Adolfo, that's right. Yeah, Flynn and Lewis are parallel, of course, so it's good to know. So yes, again, the 19th at 7:00 PM, and all are welcome, it's a free event. Thank you.
Now, before we open, pardon me?
Those are public comments.
I know, but I'm going to open.
There's some more.
Pardon?
She's bringing it to you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for public comment time on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on items that are not on the agenda?
Is that what you just gave me?
That's what you got, ma'am.
Let me see how many I've got, okay?
No, you just asked for them, those are them.
Well, some of these are items that are on the agenda, right? Nope? Okay. Let's start with Ted Kupal. Hope I got that right, Ted.
Respected council members, first, thank you all for stepping up to help pay for the mistakes of the past by saving our community from the tragic mudslides of Cano Valley. I'm Ted Kupal, a past president of the Camrio Springs Homeowners Association. I'm here to discuss another potential problem with the proposed development of our community's namesake, the Camrio Springs Golf Course, which preceded the development of the five associations at the foot of the grade. The developer's public relations firm met with our community last week to explore the possibilities of developing the property. She had no concrete or even suggested ideas for the development of the property. When asked what her principal's plan for development was, she indicated she had no idea. She did mention perhaps he would build dormitories. When our folks commented about the negative reviews we'd researched about her developers, she said he was going to develop and improve the property no matter who objected. She added, her boss was very determined and threatened us by saying that if he can't get it on the January City Council agenda, he will probably shut it down, lock the doors, and allow the property to deteriorate, grow fallow with overgrowth and weeds. She left out the rats and rodents which would follow. One of our main concerns is that he's developing in a designated flood plain, which was originally planned to drain the runoff from the water of Cano Mountain. Yes, I firmly believe that we will have rain again and torrential rain. Over the years, the golf course has been closed for weeks in the spring, as many of you know, while standing water drained in the aquifer. Please, as this comes before you, make sure that geologists and engineers are hired to explore the consequences of the disaster that might occur. As the geologist stated to you during the rock and mudslides, there is evidence that there have been thousands of fires and hundreds of rock and mudslides from Cano Mountain over the past 10,000 years. Please do not commit the same sins the city fathers did when they issued the original permits to build residence for almost a thousand folks in the path of a dangerous mountain slide. I have confidence the council will carefully evaluate not only the proposed rezoning, but also the alleged nefarious background of the developer. You have recently saved our community. Thank you. Now we plead that you save your golf course.
Thank you very much. Bill Tauber? Tabor.
I want to bring an issue to the council to consider. Good evening, thank you for your time. The matter is the idea that we act to ban rodenticides in the City of Camrio, like some other communities. I'm old enough to have worked in the industry where we produce tetraethyl lead. We no longer have leaded gasoline. My life, in my lifetime, we used to put asbestos on ducting and on heaters and the like, and we don't do that anymore, and PCBs, we don't do that anymore. Our house backs up to Rancho Caiaguas Creek, and for the first time in a couple of years, we hear the great hoots against, again, with a interesting hoot, 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 on about a 30-second basis. I don't think they're healthy. I want to try to get you to research this, perhaps come to a decision to change the policy and the use of rodenticides, so that our community, like other communities, are becoming a bit more wise about control of rodents, and let the nature, natural predators of those rodents come into their own. And as my understanding, one of the first things you could do is to reduce the food source that's present in the garbage by securing garbage containers and things like that. So that's the topic. I hope that you'll show an interest, and if you show that interest, then we can bring a presentation to the council in the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. You understand that we take comments tonight, we have to go and see if we want to put that on agenda sometime later. Thank you. Jeanette De Silva? De Silva?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff. My name is Jeanette De Silva-Curriel. That was my husband, Bill Tabor, speaking. I was supposed to go before him, but that's okay. Tonight, I would like to speak about the issue of rodenticide use within the Camrio city limits. In our wonderful city of Camrio, we are very fortunate to be surrounded by the Santa Monica Mountains and thousands of acres of open space that wildlife lives in. This wildlife, unfortunately, is being poisoned at alarming rates from rodent poisons. These rodenticide poisons are put out by property owners or pest control companies, and they're often found in bait boxes that you will see placed around the perimeters of residential or commercial properties. Mice and rats eat these poisons, they become weakened, and then they become very easy prey for wildlife, such as owls, hawks, vultures, coyotes, bobcats, and mountain lions that would feed on these weakened mice and rats. When these other predators eat their mice and rats, they then also become poisoned, and they become unintended secondary victims, and this causes massive disease and death beyond the intended targets of the mice and the rats. Any animal that is poisoned by a rodenticide will develop uncontrollable internal bleeding and will typically die a slow and agonizing death. Poisoned animals also develop a weakened immune system, which causes them, many of them, to develop mange, and mange then is also something that will cause these animals to die slowly over months or weeks. It's actually an established fact that the complete, almost the complete loss of bobcats in the Cano Valley area is, in the open space areas, is due to rodenticide poison, bobcats developing mange and then slowly dying. So the secondary poisoning of animals is extremely severe. Locally, a shocking 70 to 100% of wildlife that prey on rodents will test positive for anticoagulants and other rodent poisons. In addition to wildlife poisoning, approximately 10,000 children a year are accidentally exposed to rodenticide bait. I'm a veterinarian, and over my 30-year career, I have seen many pets poisoned by rodenticides. It is imperative that we here in the City of Camrio do our part to stop this use of rodenticide poisons and that we try to- of rodenticide poisons and that we try to prevent these poisons from killing other animals that feed on mice and rats, as well as protect our children and our pets. Agura Hills, Calabasas, Hidden Hills, Malibu, Moor Park, Ojai, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, and Westlake Village have all adopted resolutions banning local rodenticides. Camarillo is one of the few last remaining cities around the Santa Monica Mountains that does not have a resolution banning the use of rodenticides within city limits. I respectfully request that the council consider the topic of banning rodenticide use within Camarillo city limits. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Questions? Question? None. Bill, do you have a question?
Well, I guess I would ask, I guess I would ask the question, I guess I would ask the question about is there an alternative to that?
Here's on. Is there an alternative to rodenticide? Is there an alternative to the rodenticides?
Yes. I don't know if you received the document that I sent yesterday to the council members. I would suggest that the council members review the website Poison Free Malibu. They're very active in trying to reduce and prevent rodenticides within the local community, and they have adopted many resolutions, very many solutions within Malibu, such as enforcing garbage containers be locked so rodents can't get into them, preventing ability for rodents to get into residences by blocking entry routes with steel wool, et cetera. There are many, many alternatives to rodent poisons, including setting out more owl boxes. We do build our own barn owl boxes. We're trying to increase the population of barn owls in the area so that the barn owls will feed on the mice and the rodents. Again, natural predator control. But the first step is to stop the mice and rats from getting into the garbages around food establishment areas, restaurants, so forth.
Thank you very much.
There's one, one little problem with that. I have fruit trees, everything from local to guavas and so on. Rats love those things.
Yes, they do.
Okay? And you can't stop them unless you put the ones that used to be cheese on them and snap on them, those kind of things. But that also does that to squirrels.
The solution to that is the electronic-
I think he's asking for a different answer, not just locking things up, because there's natural things in yards that bring them there.
The electric rat zappers work really well.
Cats work well, too.
Electric rat snappers?
Rat zappers.
Zappers?
Yes. The rat goes in and it's electrocuted.
Oh, okay. I hadn't thought about that.
I think you can get them at Home Depot.
An electric thing that doesn't keep out squirrels, too? Don't electrify them? I love squirrels.
Well, I'm sure they're, they're built in a way so only rats can get in them, but I'm not quite sure.
Okay, okay. I'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
No, thank you.
Ted Elliott, thank you very much. Rat zappers. I gotta check on that.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, good evening. There are two subjects I would like to address tonight. First, I want to thank all involved council members for approving the debris barrier cleanout that was just completed above our homes this past couple of days. Many of us living at the base of Cano Mountain will sleep better this coming rainy season when and if we get rain. Secondly, the current owners of the Camarillo Springs Golf Course have notified residents of Camerio Springs that they intend to close the course and develop the property for some other use. This is a major concern for me, and I'm guessing many of the folks attending here tonight feel the same way. When I moved to Camarillo 12 years ago from the San Fernando Valley, it was to get away from congestion, high-density development, and to be as close to open space as possible. I know that a certain amount of development and growth is inevitable, however, wherever I go in Camarillo, construction of housing seems to be going on at a drastic pace. Now it is being proposed that the golf course be shut down, and God knows what will take its place. I am quite sure that a significant percentage of Camarillo Springs residents purchase their property because of the availability of golf, the open space that the course provides, and in general, a quiet, low-density neighborhood, a place where many of us could retire for the rest of our lives. As stated before, I realize that a certain amount of development is inevitable. However, whatever ends up for the property, personally, I would hope that at a minimum, we would have a nine-hole course that would provide some of the atmosphere and quiet serenity we now enjoy. One last thing, I would like to thank Mr. Little for his service and for his support of Camarillo Springs during the last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ron Kester?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, council people, persons, okay. My name is Ron Kester. I'm with Camerio Springs also, and I guess I'm the newly-installed president of the homeowners association. So I hope, have the opportunity to work with you on some of the concerns that are, we need to address within the council. First of all, as several others have said, we wanted to thank staff and thank all of you for the support on the cleanup of the debris in the hillside. We hiked up there yesterday with Rick Knack, who is an excellent staff employee, just a great person, extremely capable, and looked at the barriers. The barriers are clean, they're beginning to take things out, and as Ted says, I think we'll all sleep a little better knowing that it's that. And thank you very much for all of your support. There's a couple of items that we still have to resolve. One is the removal of the access road. Now, I'm aware that, you know, we put in the access road at the request of the city, and we retained it all during the cleanup, original cleanup, and then the cleanup from the barrier. That road is now taking on a life of its own. It's gotten much bigger. I have some pictures here, because a picture's worth a thousand words, but some pictures of, if we could. It is now bigger and wider with K-rails on it, and cleaning up that is a much larger job than it would have been two years ago. Before, all of the equipment was going on, it had to be widened for larger equipment. You can see from the picture that it comes right down to where people live. It's not something, when you think of emergency access roads, sometimes you think of something that's up on a hill, and it's kind of far away, and people hike it, you know, on a fire road. Well, this basically comes right down to where we live. It not only does not look good, but the geologists have said it's unstable, it needs to be taken out, there's water and mud that can drain down, it gets gullies, and so we're very concerned that when the big rains come, that that road is going to be unstable and is going to give way. And so we formally request your assistance in removing the road. Secondly, the permits of the six homes on San Como. We appreciate the issuance of, the issuance of those permits so that they can rebuild. It's proving a financial hardship. The people have been waiting two years for the permits. And then everyone else has been talking about the Camerio Springs Golf Course issue. You know, that's something we're going to be addressing. We appreciate your support and look forward to working with you in trying to get appropriate development for that. We realize the property owner's right to develop, but we want to make sure that it's appropriate and consistent with the use that is currently around it and the lifestyle of those people. Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much for all of your help. And Mr. Little, again, I'd like to recognize your support, and thank you very much, Councilman Little, for everything that you have done for us and for the community of Camarillo.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ted. Okay. Matthew Lormer. And thanks for your comments, Mr. Kester. Thank you very much.
It's over, nobody trips. Good evening, city council, people at home and people in the audience. I have a couple of words tonight to say. Proposition 64 passed, and we had an emergency ordinance, then we had an urgency ordinance. You know, next year is a new year. We have some urgencies in this community that need to be addressed. As somebody who ran for city council, I've talked to a lot of people in this community. Crime is up 18%, assaults are up 33. We really need to do something, and it's not just another normal cycle that's been mentioned. You know, we've had eight murders in over three years. There's a lot going on. We need some solutions. I still think we need the bicycle patrol and a police substation, and we need to have a conversation about it, other than just saying it's another cycle and talk about it at a council meeting. Another thing is, council members should not serve on nonprofits and take public funding. That has not been dealt with, and it seems to be on the backboard again as other issues in this community. The fire station, continuously, we're still in negotiations. Again, how long is that going to take? All these things are pretty important to people in the community, and I think they should be addressed. And when you have an urgency because of Proposition 64 passing, you're having a special meeting, maybe you should have a special meeting on some of the other issues that are affecting the people in this community. We've been talking about these issues for a long time, but next year, you should put it on the top of your list as an urgency. Another thing I'd like to say tonight, I've talked about this before, I think it's important as somebody in the community, please don't drink and drive. The holidays are up. If you're a bartender, if you own a restaurant, if you have a patron that seems to be intoxicated, please offer a ride home, have a friend, have somebody there. It's important that we discuss this. And the reason why, it seems every year, people make mistakes or they do things that affect people's lives. Everybody in the community deserves to come home, family members, a father, a wife, whoever in the community. So it's important that we talk about it, not just clearly mention it. So again, if you plan to go out to a party, if you're an owner of a bar, please, if you see somebody who you think is unacceptable to be on the road, say something, do something. Be that person that speaks up, whoever you are, whether you're a bartender, whether you're somebody in a restaurant, if you see somebody, speak up, and let's prevent anybody from losing their life this season. It's important. I think everybody wants to see all their family members come home. Thank you.
Phil Eads?
Mr. Mayor, city council staff, I'd like to reiterate and echo our appreciation for your support over the past, really, two years now through this Camerio Springs debacle with the mudslide. We, we have a new fight to fight with the golf course now. Apparently, we've had the fire, the mudslide, and now we have the golf course. All of these things have had significant impacts and potentially will have significant impacts on our environment, quality of life, property values, and so forth. Digging into this, the individual who's behind this development is a person named Ron Richards. He is, his reputation precedes him. If you simply Google Ron Richards, you'll see very quickly that some of his tactics are very cutthroat, and when we talk about, you know, closing the golf course, that's exactly where he's probably headed. There have been several other examples, and I'll mention them. Silverstone Golf Club near, in Nevada, the homeowners there have experienced a 15% to 30% reduction in property value. Rancho Mirage, one example, property value, or I'm sorry, asking price reduced 152,000 to the asking price of 337,000, reduction of 31%. Escondido Country Club, I don't have any numbers, hard numbers there, but the people there are sick and, sick of the overgrown, overgrown and fenced-off links. Property values take a hit. Litigation pending seems to be the theme there. San Ramon Golf Club, closed, long-term solution, don't know, 2016, they even closed the pool that the youth group swam in to drive the point home that they want to do what they want to do. So we're expecting this is the kind of treatment we're going to get here in Camarillo. I don't think that's, obviously not somebody that cares about the community, and certainly the people behind me, and I would even take it further, there's probably nobody in support of this at the Springs, obviously. We had a meeting a week ago with a PR firm representative came out, we met out at the Springs. The treatment was, I would say, condescending. It was more of a placation, general attitude of, you know, we want your feedback. They didn't answer any questions, had no plan, but they wanted our feedback. My impression was, they wanted to skip the process, no plan, don't want to talk about zoning, don't want to talk about general plans, they don't want to talk about environmental impacts, let's just build houses. That's kind of the impression that I had there. Obviously, there's lots of impacts potentially, I know I'm out of time. Property values, I mentioned, 20%, 30% probably is expected, increased traffic, floodplain issues that we've talked about, which has been discussed repeatedly over the last few years. So needless to say, I and pretty much everybody at Camerio Springs, the men's golf club, everybody involved is pretty much violently opposed to this project. We basically want to keep the golf course there, and we're going to fight to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Barbara Williams.
And Mr. Little, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Phil.
Thank you, city council, for all that you've done in the Camerio Springs, and we're looking forward to you helping us with regards to the golf course. What Ted Capell and Phil Eads told you was not an exaggeration. We were threatened. You know, they bought a rundown golf course, losing money, and they thought they could just do what they want. There is an appearance of entitlement to develop that golf course. They waited almost a year to tell us they're not going to fix up the golf course, and this is exactly why many of us supported and voted for Measure J. You've heard some of the tactics being used to coerce other communities into supporting their development plans at the other golf courses. We are looking to you to ensure they do not retaliate if we don't support their development plans. Many of the, many of the things that concerned us in the Cano Creek development concern us with developing the golf course. Traffic and water are certainly near the top of the list. One of the biggest concerns I had with Cano Creek was the residual DDT in the farmland, and one would expect the golf course, since it was originally farmland, also has residual DDT there as well. Disturbing or grading the golf course could release toxins into the air and go east with the normal prevailing winds directly towards our homes. Over half of the residences in Camerio Springs are seniors, who are very vulnerable to airborne toxins. And as you heard, the golf course is a floodplain with drainage from the entire community during rainstorms. Many of our communities were approved for development with that in mind. The values of many of the residences are dependent upon having that golf course. We want transparency, we want notification of what is planned, and when the planning commission and the city council will be hearing from the owners and what they are proposing. They still won't tell us what they're proposing to do. We want open space, left is open space. We don't want to become a San Fernando Valley. We appreciate Camarillo's slow-growth ordinance and the requirements to ensure that developers contribute to the existing infrastructure, to ensure existing residents don't suffer and to have to pay for new development. And we're going to continue to come here until this is resolved, and as you well know, we can fill up the council chamber in order to be heard. Thank you, and we are looking to you to protect our interests and that of the entire community. And again, thank you, Councilmember Little, for all that you've done for our community, and we're looking forward to working with the new council member as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I have no other comment cards this evening, so at this time, we'll close the comment section and move to the public hearing. And Charlotte, I'd like you to open up for the sanitary agents.
I'll open the CAM-SAN meeting.
First item is resolution setting the amount of water prices and charges, water raises and charges, excuse me. Who's handling that? Who's handling that? Who has that presentation? We're going to negotiate who's going to present it.
Okay, good, you ready? Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The item before you tonight relates to the setting of water and sewer rates.
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
You've got to get real close. There you go.
All right. The water, the water utility and sanitary district operations are designed to be self-contained enterprises, meaning revenues from user rates must be used for the purposes of providing those services. Revenues from rates cannot be used for general city operations. Tonight's presentation recommends lower rates for water and wastewater for effective January 1st, 2017, than the rates that were originally adopted in 2015. Every two years, the City of Camrio and the Camrio Sanitary District Board review current water and sewer rates needed for operations. In May of 2015, the City Council Camrio Sanitary District Board authorized a contract with Raftellus Financial Consultants to conduct a comprehensive water and wastewater rate study. In November of 2015, the City Council adopted a resolution setting the water rates for both January 1st, 2016, and January 1st, 2017. And the Camrio Sanitary District Board adopted an ordinance setting the sewer rates for that same timeframe. Since that time, Raftellus has updated their study and is recommending adjustments to the rates that were originally adopted. Tonight's public hearing, Raftellus will present their study results. And the suggested actions will be a first reading of the title of CSD ordinance to adjust sewer rates, a motion to waive further reading and introduce CSD ordinance amending, Chapter 7, Section 7001 of the Operations Code related to sewer service charges, and a motion to adopt a resolution to adjust water rates effective January 1st, 2017. So at this time, I will introduce Kevin Kostick, Senior Consultant with Raftellus, for his presentation.
Good evening.
Evening.
Everybody hear me all right?
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan and council members staff. My name is Kevin Kostick from Raftellus Financial Consultants, and we've got a brief presentation for you tonight. I believe everyone, or most of you have seen this, or the majority of this presentation, so we should be able to move through it fairly quickly. As Jeanie mentioned, we do a comprehensive study every two years, adopt rates for two years, and we're in the second year where we do a smaller update study to ensure that the second year of rates that were adopted last year are still accurate. So our agenda tonight, we'll review some of the key dates in the update study, run through the Water Enterprise, what's changed since last year, and our new proposed financial plan. We'll do the same with the Camrio Sanitary District, changes since last year, and the new proposal. We started the update over the summer of 2016. On September 20th, we had a financial plan meeting with city staff. On October 4th, we held a Utilities Committee meeting, where we went through several scenarios for new financial plans. On the 26th of October, we had a City Council study session. October 30th and November 6th, the public hearing notice was published. On the 7th, Raftellus provided the city with our draft memo of the update of the rate study. Tonight, we have the resolution to adjust rates. On the 7th, there'll be a second reading, and on January 1st, 2017, the new rates would become effective. So since 2015, we're looking to revise the increases downward from 7% to 3% for the Water Enterprise. Much of this has to do with the State Water Resource Control Board rescinding mandatory conservation, and the city doing so, similarly rescinding a Stage 2 water supply alert. We also have an updated capital improvement plan. The timing of that CIP has changed significantly since last year. And most importantly, our beginning fund balances are much better than estimated. July 1, 2017, we have an actual beginning balance of $34.8 million, where we were estimating a beginning balance of $18 million.
I've got a question, excuse me, I've got a question on that.
Sure.
I can understand the updated capital improvement having an effect on the fund, on the rate, proposed rates. I can also understand the fund balances. But what does it have to do with the mandatory reductions being rescinded?
Your water sales would increase, the amount of revenue that you would collect from water sales would increase. So what we were anticipating last year would be different than this year.
I'm not sure that that's true, but that's okay.
Also updated is the Regional Desalter Project. The project received formal approval on September 28th from the Fox Canyon GMA. It'll provide 3,800 acre-feet of local water production, of potable water. The cost of the desalter water, we have estimated to be the same as imported water, to be as conservative as possible. And we've also built up rate revenues over the last several years in anticipation of this large capital expenditure. The desalter itself is estimated to cost $30 million, and that includes a $5 million grant fund. So this was our financial plan in 2015, where we have a 7% revenue adjustment in 2016, and a proposed 7% adjustment this coming January 1. Revenue adjustments are effectively the rate increase, the overall rate increase that customers could expect to see. The green bar here is our debt coverage ratio, which is well above the red line, which is our minimum debt coverage requirement. This quadrant here is our financial plan, this shows our expenses, our operating expenses, our water supply costs, reserve funding, and debt service. Our capital financing plan here shows our expenditures that we anticipate in each year of the study, from 2016 through 2020. And this last quadrant here shows our reserve balances that we estimate for the end of each fiscal year. Now with the changes, we can propose 3% adjustment in 2017, rather than the 7%, with 3% in each year beyond that through 2021. In the operating financial plan, the red line here is our current rate revenue, the blue line is our proposed rate revenue. This bump here is caused from grant funding, kind of goes into the top line of our cash flow model, so it bumps and comes back down as those grant funds are spent. The capital plan you see has changed pretty significantly, where we had a large expenditure followed by very minor repair and replacement capital. We now have significant investments in 2017, 2018, and 2019. It has to do with timing and the kind of pushing back of certain aspects of the desalter project. But you see, in this proposed plan, we're still meeting our reserve targets. In 2021, we're just a hair underneath, but it is five years. So now we'll turn to the CSD.
Can I ask a question before we get past that?
Sure, absolutely.
This is actually disregarding any potential grants we may get through the Feinstein bill or others. So if we get those grants, that should help us tremendously.
I'll let Mr. Fox answer.
You are correct. The only revenue that we've assumed is revenue that's guaranteed at this point. Any additional grants that we receive just makes this scenario that much better, so you're right.
Thank you.
May I ask before you leave that subject, on building the desalter, is any, are we bonding or issuing bonds on any of it, or is it all grant or self-funded through the rates?
There will be some financing involved, and I believe it was $15 million?
No, actually, what we're looking at is completely rate funding the desalter project going forward.
Because of the large fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. My mistake, we are no longer needing, I guess when we scaled back the size of our project, we no longer needed the financing.
It has to do with the fact that you have both the grant funding, we've built up revenues, rate reserves even more than anticipated, so we can forego the debt issuance and simply fund the project with rates.
I have a question, Your Honor, if I might.
Kevin?
Yes, are we in the process of applying for any more grants, or is there any news at any potential new grants that might be out there that we could apply for?
Yeah, at this point, we have been working with a lobbyist in Washington. There had been some initial progress made, but the rules have been changing, and so we're kind of in a hiatus right now. And so there aren't, there isn't a real sense of, like, for example, I can't give you a probability of the sense of a positive outcome in getting a grant, but it's not looking as positive as it used to be. So we will continue to explore that, and as things settle out in Washington, we hope to get some better insight into that early next year. And the lobbyist will keep us apprised as they learn more as well. So unfortunately, I can't give you a very good assessment at this time, but we're exploring all options, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
How does Feinstein's bill look? Tom?
Yeah, I don't believe that Feinstein's bill is progressing. I think that's been replaced with what's been referred to as WARDA. And in fact...
Eric Zappertstein wrote, sent, our federal, or the CASA federal lobbyist, who's working on bills for both CASA and Aqua, the state water organization and the state sanitary organization. He sent out a memo on Thursday and another one on Friday, saying that they felt that we needed to work really hard, and there was a really good chance of getting these bills passed within the next two years.
And those are referring to the, what's been titled WARDA?
Yes.
Which I'm not, the acronym, the words escape me, but, and there's also a, I think it's Title 16.
Water Resources Development Act?
That sounds right, yes. And then there's a Title 16, which also may have some opportunities. So we're tracking those, but again, as some of the bills that have been going through the House and the Senate have different versions, and they're trying to sort through that to see what they land on. And our lobbyist is tracking that, and as we learn more where it's headed, we will engage and write support letters at the right time, which, again, they're thinking early next year, early 2017 will probably be the right time for us to engage at that point.
And that, I'm forgetting who it is, but another senator has agreed to take over the Voxer bill.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Any other questions before we turn to the CSD? Okay. So changes to Camrio Sanitary District since 2015. We're looking to revise the increase downwards from 5% to 3% on January 1, 2017. Again, it's the same story, our beginning balances for this fiscal year are significantly better than estimated. We began the year with a balance of 25.6 million, where we were estimating a balance of 18.4 million. That generally has to do with CIP timing again. Two of the large projects on, for CSD is the Pleasant Valley Force Main and the Flood Improvement Project, and those are both pushed back two years respectively. So in 2015, this is where we were. We were looking at 5% increases in each fiscal year from 2016 to 2020. Again, our operating financial plan, which shows with the bars, our O&amp;M expenses, our debt service payments, and reserve funding, and the line showing current and proposed revenues. The capital financing plan, where we have a debt issue to cover some of the capital projects in fiscal year 2017 and 2018, and our ending reserve balances here, where we meet the targets in all years, and are a hair below again in 2020. What we propose in our update is revise each year downward to 3% from 5%. We do have a debt issue. You see, we have our debt coverage ratio here still well above our minimum. The operating financial plan summarized. The capital plan, you can see how the timing has changed, and it's now fairly backloaded within the study horizon. And the total ending reserves for each year are still very healthy. We do anticipate a debt issue in 2020 of approximately $14 million. And that's what I have for you. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? Kevin?
The 2020 debt issue, do you know what that's going to be for? Maybe you could go out that far.
What it will be for?
Yes.
It's to help fund those two large projects.
Projects.
The Force Main and the Flood Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bill.
Tony, I understand that this Force Main is being re-looked at as a project.
That is correct. We are in the process of doing the, every so many years, we have to review the sewer system management plan. That management plan looks at a variety of aspects of our sanitary system. The work we're looking at is the capital component, the need for that sewer main, so absolutely that'll be an important part of the analysis with, hopefully, with the goal of trying to find a less expensive alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you all.
Any questions of staff before we go on?
I don't have any.
We have, I guess it's a public hearing.
It's open public hearing this time, is there anyone who wishes to contact?
Are you on, Mike?
I was wondering, it must have gone off.
Hello? Whoa, that was weird. I haven't even touched it. Is there anyone who wishes to address the City Council this evening and the sanitary district on these items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment, and there's something that's been, that's bothering me a little bit about, well, both sides of the House there, but let's start with the water side and the large capital project. I know we pride ourselves in gathering up the money and being able to pay for so many of our capital projects upfront, so that we don't have the debt ongoing. What's bothering me about this one is it's such a large, long-term project, that we're asking today's rate payers to pay for that actually benefits out so far. So we're, you know, kind of front-loading the obligation on today's rate payers and not, you know, asking everyone to share more equally. Granted, it would cost less to not have the debt to service, and that's the part that's just kind of eating at me with this piece of it. Good on one side, bad on the other, you know, as far as who's having to pay for it.
Yeah, could I?
Mr. Kevin?
Yeah, this is actually the first big project, and you're talking about the desalate.
Yes, yes, I mean, that's...
This is the first big project for either water or sewer that I remember in the last 30 years, that we haven't gone out to finance for. And so I think this, we have a lot of things that were put on future, and we still are paying for some of those things, and people in the future will. So I think this is, this is different than we've done in the past, and I don't have a problem with this way of doing it for this one. We thought it was going to cost a lot more. We were collecting money through the rates for what we thought it was going to cost. Unfortunately, we were not able to get that large project passed, so it's going to cost less. In the meantime, we saved more, and I think it's a good way to finance it. I mean, I wouldn't have recommended collecting more than we actually were going to need, but we thought we were going to need more.
Right, but then I guess what I'm wondering is to, instead of continuing to increase today's rate payer's rate in order to meet that, if we, you know, pull it out a little bit longer, so that those who benefit from it share, because we've gone up every year, every year. And granted, it's nice to have it not be quite as much as what we expected, that's a nice thing to bring forward, but I just keep wondering that if, if it wouldn't be nice to be able to let today's rate payers skip a year without having to have an increase and spread that out a little bit more? And that's just what's bothering me about this one.
Bill?
Well, I think there's some merit in what you've said, although you've got to keep in mind that the average amount of debt you pay for bond issues is about half of what you issue, so you're talking about adding another... So, you're talking about adding another, you know, 50% to the bond, to what the rate payers pay. So, it's a pretty high price for everybody to have that luxury of having someone else down the road pay for it.
That's why I keep struggling with it. I understand both sides of it, so it's a-
Kevin, you have any questions or any comments?
I don't have any questions.
Any more comments? I have none. I think the staff's done a great job putting this together, gentlemen. That was a great job.
Your Honor?
Have we gone through this before? Yes, Ms. Craven?
I was going to make a motion to adopt a resolution setting the amount of water rates and charges effective January 1, 1917, as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion, a second? Please vote. That motion passes four to one, with Ms. McDonald voting against it.
And I would request a reading of the title for the, no, I'm sorry. That's, forget it.
We've got a motion that's already done?
Yes, for both of them.
Okay, everyone, please vote, please.
I thought we just did.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. I thought you said vote.
No.
Raise that. Okay, let's move to the next item. Next item on the agenda, departmental.
Do we adopt both?
Do you have to do the sewer?
I don't think we've adopted the sewer one.
Oh, the sewer one, that's in Charles' hands.
Now, I request a reading.
Yes.
Did I hear somebody request a reading of the title?
No, that's for the next ordinance.
That's the next ordinance.
I will request a reading of the title for the CAMSAN sewer rate ordinance.
Second.
You don't second that.
All right. I'm going to get started here. It's CSD Ordinance Number 89. It's an ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Camarillo Sanitary District amending Chapter 7, Section 7001 of the District's Operations Code relating to sewer service rates.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to waive further reading and introduce the CSD Ordinance amending Chapter 567, Section 7001 of the Operations Code relating to sewer service charges.
And Mr. Little has seconded it.
Second, how are you seconding that?
Okay, is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries four to one, with Director McDonald dissenting.
For the same reason.
Okay, now, do you need, yours now.
I will now adjourn the CAMSAN meeting.
Okay, item B for this evening, adoption of ordinance amending Chapter 1604 of Municipal Code and adopting new, what is that, new model building codes. Who's got that? You do.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan, members of the City Council. Renee Mario will give a very brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name's Renee Mario, and I'm the city building official. Every three years, the State of California updates the building codes. By state mandate, all of the revised codes go into effect six months after adoption. These codes were adopted July 1 of this year and will go into effect January 1 of 2017. The state allows local jurisdictions to make amendments to the state code for four reasons: administrative, geologic, climatic, and topographic. With the exception of administrative amendments, any local amendment may not be less restrictive than the state code. Administrative amendments may include the amount of time an application expires, setting permit fees. Example of geographic amendment would require minimum 27-inch deep footings for expansive soils in the local area. There were not a lot of significant changes to the code this cycle. The city's previous local amendments were brought forward to this code update, and we are requesting a reading of title. Motion to waive further reading and to adopt ordinance number 1132, adopting certain codes by reference.
Questions, comments? Senior, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
With no questions or comments, I'd like to request reading of the title.
Public hearing?
Oh, this is a public hearing. I forgot no one's here. I have no cards for this item, but if anyone wishes to address the City Council on this item, please come forward. Come on, Tony, make some comments on it. I'll close the public hearing and request reading of the title.
This is ordinance 1132, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, amending Chapter 16.04 of the Camarillo Municipal Code and adopting by reference the following model codes into the Camarillo Municipal Code. One, California Building Code Volumes 1 and 2, 2016 edition, with appendices B, C, I, and J. Two, California Electrical Code, 2016 edition. Three, California Plumbing Code, 2016 edition, with appendix K. Four, California Mechanical Code, 2016 edition. Five, International Property Maintenance Code, 2015 edition. Six, California Administrative Code, 2016 edition. Seven, California Energy Code, 2016 edition. Eight, California Reference Standards, 2016 edition. Nine, California Existing Building Code, 2016 edition. Ten, California Residential Code, 2016 edition, with appendices G and H. Eleven, California Green Building Standards Code, 2016 edition, and making amendments based on local climatic, topographic, and geographical conditions.
I moved to waive further reading of the ordinance and adopt ordinance number 1132, adopting certain codes by reference.
Second.
Any other comments? Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. I see no other items on our agenda this evening, so unless anyone has any other comments.
We have a special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, our special meeting. We have some more-
Well, that one is adjourned too.
It is adjourned.
Both it and the CAMSAN meeting are adjourned to December-
Yes, I just said that. I said we're adjourned.
December 7.
I know.
That's for the regular meeting, as being adjourned?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to what?
Call the special one back to order.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the special meeting, which we had, we conducted in a study hall there, I call it. Who's going to-
So, this is, this is a departmental item that is on your special meeting agenda. You're correct, we did have a study hall session on this earlier this evening. So, I'll be addressing the subject, which is a proposed interim emergency ordinance. This interim emergency ordinance is being presented to the council for consideration in light of the passage of Proposition 64, which legalized recreational marijuana. So, on November 8, 2016, the California voters approved Proposition 64, which does legalize recreational marijuana, and it establishes a regulatory system similar to that for medical marijuana. Under the AUMA, marijuana cultivators, manufacturers, distributors, retailers, and testing laboratories will need to obtain a state license to operate. And we refer to all of those entities that I just referenced that, in that last statement, as being marijuana businesses in my later comments. So, the key features of Proposition 64, I will go through those for you now. First of all, cities may completely ban all marijuana businesses if they choose to do so. Secondly, the state will not issue a license to a marijuana business if the proposed business would violate a local ordinance. Three, the state is not going to issue licenses for recreational marijuana businesses until January 1 of 2018. It is my understanding that it is possible that such licenses may come earlier than January 1 of 2018, which is something that we will research further and can report back to you at your next council meeting with regards to that possibility. The next feature I'll mention is that individuals may possess limited amounts of marijuana and marijuana products and/or cultivate up to six plants. The next feature is that no more than six plants may be cultivated at any given time at a private residence. Next, cities may reasonably regulate private indoor cultivation, but may not completely prohibit it. The term reasonably regulate is not a defined term in Proposition 64. I would mention at this point that the state does intend to adopt, first draft for comment and then adopt regulations implementing Proposition 64. And I would speculate it's possible that there may be some regulations which might provide further information with regards to that, what constitutes reasonable regulation. The next feature is that cities may completely prohibit private outdoor cultivation. And finally, and this would relate to situations in which a city does allow one or more types of marijuana businesses to operate within the city, which you don't have to do, but if you do allow them to operate, then cities may impose local taxes on marijuana retailers and cultivators. And we will be exploring further what those tax options will be, and we can report to you at a future meeting on that. So, for this evening, I have here a slide showing the summary of the proposed ordinance, and this is a proposed interim urgency ordinance. It's authorized under Government Code, Section 65858 of the Government Code. It would establish a 45-day moratorium on non-medical marijuana facilities and private marijuana cultivation, except for private cultivation of six plants or less, which would be subject to reasonable regulations. So, this slide sets forth the restrictions that are being imposed under this temporary urgency ordinance. Number one is that marijuana businesses would be prohibited. Those are the types of businesses that I mentioned to you previously. Number two, cultivation is going to be limited to six living marijuana plants inside of a private residence or a secured accessory structure. And then there's some conditions under which the cultivation may take place. Those four conditions are that there be consent of the property owner, compliance with building codes, no gas products such as CO2 or butane, compliance with Health and Safety Code, Section 11362.283, which was part of Proposition 64. And that is the section that includes the limitation to six plants. And the third restriction that's going to be imposed by this ordinance would be, there would be no deliveries of marijuana in the city. And I should mention to you that this ordinance is designed to address Proposition 64, which is for recreational marijuana. The subject of medical marijuana is already addressed in your municipal code. So, one of the questions that has often been asked about Proposition 64 is where can individuals smoke or ingest marijuana on a recreational basis? And under Proposition 64, marijuana may be used for recreational purposes, but these are the restrictions in terms of where the product may be consumed. Number one is that there can be no smoking or ingesting of marijuana or marijuana products in what's called a public place. The Proposition 64 does not define the term "public place," but we've researched this, and in the context of other court cases, we have found that "public place" is defined to mean a place which is public or private that is reasonably accessible to the public without a barrier. So, I could give you, by way of an example, a parking lot at a shopping center, even though it's not public property, it is accessible to the public. So, marijuana could not be smoked or consumed in a commercial parking lot, as an example. The second restriction is that the, there can be no smoking of marijuana in a location where smoking tobacco is prohibited. There are state laws that limit where you can smoke tobacco, and we also, in Camarillo, have adopted an ordinance which imposes even further limitations on tobacco smoking, and that's found in our Chapter 9.24. The third restriction on smoking of recreational marijuana is that no smoking of marijuana within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, or youth center while children are present. Fourth, no smoking, ingesting, or possessing marijuana at a school, daycare center, or youth center while children are present. And finally, there can be no smoking or ingesting of marijuana while driving or being a passenger in a vehicle, motor vehicle, boat, or aircraft.
I have a question.
Yes?
The location that says 1,000 feet of a school, does that mean if you're in a home within 1,000 feet, you cannot smoke marijuana?
No, it does not mean that. You can smoke marijuana if you're within a home, provided, and there's some restrictions on this, and I'd have to double-check to get you a complete answer on that, but as long as it's not, as long as the smoke is not, is contained within the structure, but I'll, I'd have to look that one up specifically. Yeah, that's my recollection of it, is that just because you may live within 1,000 feet of a school doesn't prohibit you from smoking within your home recreational marijuana.
Outstanding.
That's one I'll have to get back to you on, because I know there's a rule on that, and I'll have to double-check it. But rather than take the time to do that now, I'll make sure that the next time we come back to you, which is going to be on December 14, I'll have an answer to that question. All right, this slide was put together to provide you with a comparison between the restrictions on medical marijuana and your Chapter 19.25 and the urgency ordinance that is being presented to you this evening. So, we took four categories, four purposes of this comparison. The first one is with respect to commercial marijuana businesses. They are not allowed either under your ordinance 19.55 for medical marijuana, and they would not be allowed under this interim ordinance either. Secondly, delivery, same situation. Deliveries of marijuana to persons within the city are not allowed under your medical marijuana code and would not be allowed under this ordinance. Thirdly, outdoor cultivation, again, not allowed under your current code and would not be allowed under this ordinance. The one distinction between the four categories is category number four. Category number four addresses indoor cultivation. Currently, your medical marijuana ordinance prohibits all cultivation in the city, both indoor and outdoor. However, it's my opinion that, given Proposition 64, that the prohibition against indoor cultivation by marijuana patients who are taking it for medical reasons, that could not be enforced. So, those, so anyone can grow marijuana, whether they're a medical marijuana user or a recreational user. And then, the last category here with respect to this ordinance, what does this allow in terms of indoor cultivation? It does allow up to six plants, but remember my earlier comments about what those restrictions are. They need the consent of the owner, and no uses of gases, et cetera. And one of the reasons for the limitations with respect to the use of gases and other chemicals is that there's been a history, and it's reported in the materials, it's in your agenda report, of one, a number of incidents that would have occurred, and one of them was in the city of New York, where the police and fire responded to a house where marijuana was being grown. Apparently, there was use of chemicals at that time, and there was an explosion, and a piece of the building struck and killed a firefighter at that time. So, there is a history of risks with this, so these restrictions are being imposed for good reasons. Now, one of the things that we intend to do over the course of the next few months is to do further analysis of what would be an appropriate permanent ordinance for the city in connection with recreational marijuana. We do plan to come back to you at your meeting on December 14, and we seriously doubt that we'll be in a position by that time to have had that permanent ordinance drafted and ready to go. There's a lot of issues that are still remaining to be studied. There are state regulations, as I mentioned, that are going to be drafted in 2017. So, you will have the option on December 14 to extend this ordinance up to a period of 10 and a half months, which would take us to the middle of October of 2017. And we would expect, unless something unusual happens, that we would, certainly before October of next year, have a permanent ordinance and give you various choices in that ordinance as to what you want to include in it. Do you want to ban, for example, marijuana businesses? Do you want to allow or not allow outdoor cultivation? So, there's a number of questions that will need to be asked, and we'll need your direction on that to assist in the drafting of that permanent ordinance. And as with all permanent ordinances, we would be coming back- And as with all permanent ordinances, we would be coming back with a first reading of the ordinance and then later a second reading. So that summarizes the issue. The suggested action is a motion to adopt the urgency ordinance to establish a 45-day moratorium pertaining to private marijuana cultivation and non-medical marijuana facilities.
Do we request further reading of the title at this time, Mr. Mayor, City Attorney?
Yes, you can certainly do that, if, if, if there's no questions.
Questions?
We, we had discussed in our study session whether or not it would be wise to have a permit system for outside cultivation.
Yes, you did, and, and, and I'm glad you asked that. In connection with the indoor cultivation, I have seen a discussion with respect to whether or not a city wishes and whether or not you're going to want to, to have this in Camrio, a permit system where someone who wants to grow marijuana inside their home or an accessory structure would be required to apply to the city for a permit. What the permit requirements would be probably would include some form of inspection to make sure that whatever the plans are for the growing of the marijuana, don't violate your building codes, create a, a safety hazard, fire, risk of fire, things of that nature. So, those are issues that, that still need to be explored further.
I have one question, because it was earlier. When you talk about the amount you can have on your possession, if, young man, and your three ounces over, policeman stops you, but I didn't know how much it was, no one's ever set up, said how much that would be, is there any way we can put this out someday when we get our, this thing okayed, so we know how much they can possess legally?
Well, I can tell you how much they can possess legally, and in answer to your question, ignorance of the law is no excuse, so if they have in their possession more than the law allows, then they would be subject to being cited by the police. The quantity that they can possess is, under Proposition 64, 28.5 grams of non-concentrated marijuana, or eight grams of marijuana in a concentrated form, and they can also have six plants. So that's the maximum permitted, and if they exceed the maximum permitted, if they're growing more than six plants, or if they have quantities in excess of what the code allows, then they're subject to arrest.
Okay, we will be someday when we get our orders passed, putting the word out what these mean, because not everyone reads the law, reads all the law, and they buy some of this and say they're 30 ounces over, and they didn't know. I know it says ignorance is no, no excuse, but in some cases where it hasn't been out, hasn't been put out in the public, what that means...
Well, you're right, it does, definitely does need to be, and, you know, that, that deals with the issue of dissemination of the information, and we can do whatever, perhaps, I don't know, city scene, it's not really a, a legal question, it's more of a question, I think, for city manager and staff to decide.
The answer is yes, we can get information out.
Thank you.
I guess that would be the short answer.
Questions, other comments, motions?
Your Honor, I'll move that we adopt an urgency ordinance establishing a 45-day moratorium pertaining to the private marijuana cultivation and non-medical marijuana facilities.
Second.
Let me read the title, just to be clear on this. What we're talking about here is Urgency Ordinance Number 1133, and it's an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camrio, California, adopting a moratorium pertaining to private marijuana cultivation and non-medical facilities, and you can vote now.
We have a motion? Did we get a second? I didn't hear a second.
Yes, I second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Well, that ends our agenda for this evening.
Wow.
Yeah.
I never would have guessed that.
No. Oh, I do have an answer, I think, here, to Councilmember Little's question.
Go ahead, before, this is information only, go ahead.
Well, yes, but he asked the question about the 1,000 feet, and the answer is that there's no smoking marijuana within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, et cetera, while children are present, unless in or upon the grounds of a private residence and the smoke is not detectable. So, again, trying to enforce all that is difficult.
Can I ask a question on something else? And on the chart, it said no deliveries under the Medical Marijuana Act.
Can we get the PowerPoint back up?
And I thought there was one exception, if you were the primary caregiver and this was your patient.
On the medical side.
Oh, well, I don't need the chart to answer that. Yes, yes, you can have a primary caregiver deliver the marijuana to a patient, but we don't consider that...
As that was his patient.
Yes.
For hers.
That's right, but I, we're speaking more in terms of like, commercial deliveries where people are delivering it to somebody other than a qualified patient, and that they're not the primary caregiver, but your, your point is well-taken. Were there any other questions?
No other questions? Then we are adjourned, till the 14th.